Hello, welcome, welcome, welcome. I see a few folks are joining. We're going to give people just a couple of minutes to jump on tonight's event spotlight on school boards is going to be such a fun uplifting, hopefully inspiring conversation about the important work that school boards and library boards across the country are doing. But we want to give people just a few minutes. And we're not going to have chat on tonight's conversation, just to keep everyone's focus, but we will have the Q and A open. So you will have a chance to ask questions of any of our panelists this evening. I'm actually going to do two different conversations tonight. First with some library board members, then with some school board candidates and members, and I think you're going to really find it thrilling, I hope. We're going to give people another 30 seconds or so to join us, but I see some friends already on. And hello Roxanne, hello Anne, hello Dee, hello Trudy and others. It's so good to see so many friends have run for something on tonight's call. And we'll give people another 15 seconds or so, and then we will get started. We try and run a pretty tight ship here at Run for Something. You know, for folks who are familiar with our events, we're always right on time. And so thank you in advance for being punctual. Let's get started. My name is Amanda Littman. For those who are not familiar, I'm one of the co-founders and co-executive directors of Run for Something. And I am thrilled to be kicking off and I'll be back to close tonight's awesome conversation spotlight on school boards. We are prioritizing school boards work for 2022 and beyond because we have seen what the far right is up to. As far back as at this point, almost 30 years ago, Ralph Free, the leader of the Moral Majority said straight up, if we, I would rather have a thousand school board members than one president. Because the far right understands that if you control what kids are learning, if you control the kinds of education they are getting, if you control the kinds of pay we're giving teachers and the caliber of our schools, you control and determine the kind of people kids grow up to be. We have seen this in action over the last two years. I think it really got its start, especially in the conversations around mask mandates and critical race theory, even though as we know, no K through 12 school was actually teaching critical race theory. That didn't matter. Schools are personal. Schools are about people's kids. They're about their hearts walking inside their bodies. We want to make sure that the folks who are protecting and governing these places share our values and are willing to fight loudly and proudly for them. That they understand that it's not just about teaching people history, it's about teaching them an accurate history. It's not just about teaching them to read, it's about teaching them compassion and literature and expanding their horizons. It's one of the reasons that Run for Something is prioritizing school board work this year. And we've already elected 100 school board members in the last five years and we're hoping to dramatically increase that this year and beyond. Because we know that this is the work that will determine the future of the American civic engagement. I am so glad and grateful to the members of the host committee who sponsored tonight's event and made this possible. That includes the incredible Anne Hess and Craig Kaplan, Al Akar Lyons, Vicky Lenowitz and Benjamin Whale. And I am thrilled that our host committee has very generously agreed to match all their gifts tonight up to $5,000. So if you haven't given tonight, of course, we appreciate if you have, but if you haven't, every gift tonight will be matched up to 5,000 bucks. I will come back and remind you of that in the end. If you are inspired tonight, whether to give, great, to run for school board yourself or for library board, also great. We are here to either help you or help you help us either way. I am so glad to not be moderating tonight's conversation. You only have to hear from me once at the beginning and once at the end. Instead, we are thrilled to have Manny Espitia, the Northern Regional Director for Run for Something. Manny is the New Hampshire State Representative and New Hampshire Democratic Floor Leader. He's originally a Southern California native. He started working on campaigns in 2012 in New Mexico for President Obama's reelection. Since then, he's worked in LA and Chicago and San Antonio until he moved to Nashville, New Hampshire. He was an organizer for Hillary's primary campaign, a congressional staffer. He was the New Hampshire State Director for Julian Castro. He also ran for awesome himself. He is now a state rep. He's a graduate of Princeton. He is an incredible member of the Run for Something team and as the reason we're having him host tonight's conversation is he's also a member of his local library board. So he knows better than anyone just how important and how crazy, but in a fun way mostly, sometimes these centers of governance can be. So again, if you have any questions throughout tonight's conversation for either of our two panels, you can drop them in the Q and A. Manny will be pulling from there to direct any questions and I will be back in the end. Manny, take it away.
Thank you, Amanda, and it's, it's a pleasure to be here with all of y'all. My name is Manny Espitia and you know, thank you Amanda for giving me such a wonderful introduction. But yes, I wear many hats, but one of my favorite hats is Library Board Trustee Member here in the city of Nashville. Usually this has been a very low key position where people, you know, were really just approving and helping support programming and helping to, you know, advocate for our library. But it's turned into something a lot, you know, it's gone, gone, gone a little off the rails with the way some of the folks have started attacking us and starting to reach out and say, you know, these books don't belong on the shelves. And really kind of advocating for banning, banning books, to be frank. So, you know, I'm proud to be, to be a member of my school, of my library board and continue to, you know, have such positive programming here in the city. But, you know, we have some wonderful folks who are going to be joining us. So I'm going to be introducing Dr. Katie Clark. She is, she serves as the Altadena Library Board, Library District Board of Trustee out in California. It has, has since her election in 2018, where she immediately championed transparency in board governance, equity in election process for the board, and the visionary strategic planning process to guide the Altadena libraries into a new era of library service. Under her leadership as Board President from 2019 to 2021, during the pandemic, the district retained and paid all staff at existing rates, developed and provided extensive remote and online options for programming, and followed a rigorous set of public health protocols that kept patrons, staff and community members safe. So Katie's also developed chair, developed chair to manage the 2020 Measure Z campaign that passed with overwhelming support among Altadena voters, 72%. Securing 24 million in bonds to repair and update the district libraries and ensure service funding in perpetuity. And she does, and she in 2021 received the president's award from the California Library Association, recognizing her outstanding contributions, leadership and achievement in support of California libraries. And she plans to run for a second term in November to continue her work. So nice to see you, Dr. Clark. Thank you for joining.
Thanks. I'm delighted to be here.
And the other person I'm introducing is going to be, I believe it's Crystal Davila, yes. And Crystal is a member of the Pasadena ISD School Board. Crystal is an educator and committed to creating opportunities that are not present in her community she grew up in. Her community is, I believe, 80% Latino. And yet the school board is composed of more older and affluent white people who are not representative of the majority of the population, but her district pushes students to college without preparing these underserved communities with tools to strive. So she ran for school board to change that and was elected and is now serving the Pasadena ISD. So really excited to have Crystal and Katie join us. So welcome both of y'all.
Excited to be here.
So I'll go ahead and start with Dr. Clark. So Katie, you are a staunch defender of libraries and librarians. How much harder has the job become in the last year?
Well, I mean, anybody who has worked in public services over the last several years can tell you that, you know, it's not just a sustained effort around banning books, although that's certainly a major component of what we're here to talk about. But it's all of the pressures on social services, especially throughout the course of the pandemic. You know, libraries provide this unique service in so many of our communities where it's not just access, and you know this from, from being on a library board, of course Manny, but it's, it's not just books or access to materials. It's access to digital services. It's where people go to renew a passport or to figure out how to start a small business. It's one of the only places you can physically go and be without having to pay money, right? In a lot of communities, so it's, it's been tough throughout the course of the pandemic on so many public libraries. Many cities and municipalities, as the pressures of COVID increased, you know, kind of pushed more and more and more onto libraries and librarians. And it really has been tough on public libraries. And then, you know, you add on top of that, this huge rise that we're seeing in book bans. And it just, it just puts public libraries in a really tough spot at a moment when, you know, arguably they're, they're doing more with less than they've ever done.
No, 100%, 100% agree. Our next question will be out to Crystal. So you went from student to teacher and now board member in your district. What has the transition been like for you?
It's been really difficult. I feel like every year I set myself to do something and it's the hardest thing I've done in my life. This has been really difficult. It's mostly because of time conflict. I write as an educator to be on the school board because as you mentioned, I do believe that we need more educators on school boards. These people have little interest in knowing the problems. They don't really further their education about what works with our students. They're not open to many ideas like educators are. But this year I decided to become a teacher in Houston ISD. And even though I feel really lucky to be at the school where I'm at, the principal's open. She wants us to do anything that student or is student oriented. There's just time conflict with being a trustee because there's things happening during the day. But then I have the strict schedule of a teacher during the day. And in order to take time off, I have to overplan. I have to get a substitute which, you know, there's a shortage in the US. So it's been really difficult and this is my last year as a teacher. I'm open to whatever is out there, but I'm calling it a year after this one and I might come back after my term. I'm still debating whether I want to run again or not.
I was gonna say, I think we can all agree that just serving in office and elected office is a big time commitment. And so, no, I don't, I don't blame you, but it's unfortunate we're losing a good teacher. But I'm, I'm sure you'll be able to devote a lot more time to the school board as well.
Yeah, and I want to point out something. When it comes to school board members here in Texas, we're not paid, we're not even given a stipend. So we're doing all of this for free. It might be different in other states, but in Texas, it's non-paid.
No, that rings true for most states or it's a small stipend. It's not, definitely not like livable, but it's, I definitely agree with that. The next question I have for both of y'all is school and library board races have been getting a lot of attention and have been unusually heated in the past year. So as sitting board members, how was your experience compared, how was your experience compared to what we're seeing online? And I'll go ahead and start with Katie first.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really interesting, right? And I, I think that for a lot of folks, maybe who haven't been watching local races, especially school library board races in the, in the same way that, you know, Run for Something and a lot of you folks have. It's surprising to see all of this brouhaha coming up at school boards and all of these folks coming out of the woodwork, running for elected office who, you know, have never really participated in a meaningful way in the civic process before. Maybe their funding is a little suspicious. And, and we all get it, right? There's been a sustained decades-long investment on the, on the far right at, you know, getting sort of that local presence because it's so important, right? And, and, and so seeing that happen has, has made a lot of, you know, I think you said it earlier Manny, a lot of boards that are usually pretty quiet, you know, where maybe what you do is you pass the budget and you have a, you know, a rousing debate about whether or not the bookmobile is going to get a new, you know, set of tires this year or next year. And like everybody's got really strong feelings about it. But, you know, that's really turned into a major debate about what the role of local government is, what it means to provide services, what it means to have open access to materials and to learning and what people are entitled to see represented in, in their local libraries. So it's really, it's really transformed. I mean, where we are here in Altadena, it's, you know, it's, it's sort of, you know, greater Los Angeles County, we're an unincorporated community. And, and so we haven't seen the same kind of, you know, hyper partisan issues that have been the case in a, in a lot of other areas. But we, it has been a constant topic of conversation among staff, among library members in all of our professional networks across the state. Because, yeah, it's, it's happening everywhere and it's a, it's a much more coordinated effort than we really seen in the past.
How about you, Crystal?
Well, when it comes to my board, you were asking earlier, where's Pasadena? And I had to tell you, or it's, you know, right there next to Houston's the next biggest city in this area in Harris County. And I was telling someone earlier today, Pasadena is a type of place, just like most suburbs that surround big cities. It's a type of place that doesn't get the media attention that it deserves, to be honest. And, you know, there are good things that come with that, but then there are also things that will be beneficial, at least on my end. When it comes to our school board meetings, the only people who attend the school board meetings in Pasadena, as of now, are the administrators who work for the school district. When it comes to my school district, they have created a culture where the only people attending are them. They give out rewards. It's a whole pony show in the beginning of a school board meeting. And then any other person who's not an administrator are basically released. You know, they're encouraged to leave the school board meeting after we give out awards. So I haven't even been on the board for a year, but I've been trying to change that and I've been trying to invite more people to school board meetings. Because from my end, when it comes to being both a student and a teacher, there's a lot of unsatisfaction with the school district. So I actually want to see more engagement and I think it would help to see more people come to our school board meetings if we had more media attention. So that's something that I'm probably a project that I'm going to try to take on, like how can we bring more attention to Pasadena? Because there are controversies happening here, but no one's paying attention to them. Again, because there's so many attention. So we don't have that, you know, attention that other bigger, bigger school districts have. Fortunately, right? On one end, but on the other end, I just wish more people were involved, civically engaged, as we like to say.
Yeah, I was gonna say, careful what you wish for, like, I'd like, the, the, one of my cra- the wildest stories I heard of last year or we were a part of was Central York School Board where, you know, it's a small school district out in like, out in the middle of York County, Pennsylvania, you know, not a very big county, but, you know, they were banning about 300 bucks. And then suddenly everyone was like laser focused on what was happening in central Pennsylvania. And, you know, fortunately, because that was, you know, something that, but no, you're right. Usually before, you know, before like school boards or library boards get this heightened attention, it's usually not for a good reason. And so, but I think what I have seen in my own school district, after, after seeing this kind of, we had a lot of anti, anti-vaccine and anti-mask people come through. We had a lot more folks show up who had typically not been involved in a positive way. And you're showing support to our teachers, showing support to our administrators who are dealing with a lot of this negative attention. So, no, I applaud that you're trying to get folks more active because definitely it's good to have community members actually show up and, you know, hear what's going on on our boards.
Know what's happening, yeah.
Yeah. And before I move on to the next question, I want to remind folks that you can ask any, you know, any questions that y'all have on your mind. Go ahead, use the Q and A feature at the bottom of your screen. Feel free to, you know, ask our wonderful panel, whatever, whatever's on your mind. So don't forget to use the Q and A feature. So the next question I have for both of y'all is, what's the one thing that surprised you about sitting on a board? And I'll, I'll kick it to Crystal first.
There's many things that surprised me about sitting on the board. I guess for me, you know, I ran and I am definitely still the underdog when it comes to being a board member in my school district. So when I won, it felt pretty serene, you know, me and my family, we were happy, we were at an all-time high. So as a board member, you have really good moments and people show you the best of them, right? But then on the other side, you see the worst of people, just kind of like the rules that you usually have when you're interacting with people are kind of thrown out the window. And that has surprised me how ugly people can be. And, you know, conflicts of interest that are in basically every political position. And I think as younger people, as progressives, as people who really come in with no network, we're kind of surprised at how it runs. And like you said earlier, just kind of like, you know, where does the funding come from? It's questionable. And I think we should always be following the money. And this is not just for Pasadena, I'm talking about other school districts as well. But it's been mostly how people behave in the political arena. That's what surprised me the most.
That's real. Dr. Clark?
Yeah, it's, it, yeah, it's, I definitely have never had as many people just call me up personally and tell me what they think. And while on the one hand, it's, it's totally, it's, you know, it's part of the deal. On the other side, it's, it's surprising the first, the first couple of times it happens. You know, I think the biggest surprise for me, and, and this is, I'm coming to the end of my first term in office, is just how much structural inequality is baked into everything at every level all the time. And it's in all of these innocuous places that I sort of didn't expect to find it. But it's everything from, here's how we put together a budget, to here are the assumptions we're making about, you know, family leave or parental leave policies for the district, or here's, you know, what we're going to do for cost of living or for fair wages or health protections, to here's how we raise taxes and here's how the tax, you know, or revenue generation mechanisms work. All of these things, I feel like every time I kick over a new rock and I learn about a new process, it's like, wait, why are we doing this way? This seems so unfair. And everybody's like, yeah, you know, it's pretty unfair, it kind of sucks, but we've just like always done it this way. Which is a terrible reason to do, it's terrible reason to do things, right? And it's not necessarily that there's like, you know, tons of malicious intent and a bunch of, you know, people twirling their mustaches, trying to, you know, crush, crush the dreams of society, although maybe. It's just more the case that it's, you know, it's the status quo, right? And things have sort of evolved that way to minimize liability and make it easier and, you know, promote all kinds of inequities that exist in society. And so just constantly discovering new places where we go, oh my God, we, we can't keep doing it this way. This is terrible, right? And then inventing these systems, pushing through new policy, making it happen, kind of being really intentional about the way that we do all those small behind the scenes pieces. It's just, it's amazing how many moving parts there are that are just, you know, sort of fundamentally unfair.
Yeah, you'd be surprised what people do to keep the status quo too.
That's right.
My next question is, what can be done about book bans across the country? And how do we make sure that everyone has access to fair and accurate books and references? So Katie, go ahead, give us a start on that.
Yeah, so, I mean, you guys have been following along with this, I'm sure, but we've seen just in the past, just in the past year, this massive rise in book bans. I mean, 700 different plus specific bands across the country, 1,500 plus different titles. And what's really wild about all these book bans is that, like, most folks think they're a terrible idea, right? Data for Progress, and there's something like 71% of voters and 64% are Republicans, by the way. So like, a majority of people, any way you, you slice that data, oppose banning books. But there is this very, very vocal, very well organized minority of folks who are actively pushing this. So, you know, what can we do? Well, the first thing you can do, anybody, right? Citizens, educators, groups, is you can join a campaign that is being driven by the American Library Association and a ton of other partners, Unite Against Book Bans. And so if you go to uniteagainstbookbans.org, you can sign the petition, add your name, and they're going to keep you in the loop about what's happening across the country. So it's a whole network of people from public school educators to librarians, to public libraries, to publishers, who all think that, you know, basically we need to empower readers, we need to stand against censorship and that people have the right to understand complex issues, see themselves reflected in the books in their local public libraries. That, you know, it's not appropriate, it's not part of our democracy for a small minority of folks to make decisions about what everybody else can read. People should be trusted to make their own decisions about what to read, right? So that's, that's something anybody can do. And then, you know, at the very local level, like Crystal was saying, a lot of times, boy, a lot of times those, those library and school board meeting rooms, they are pretty empty until controversy erupts. And so getting in there ahead of time is huge. Ask your public library, hey, what is your collection development policy? Do you guys have a diversity audit? How do you decide what's in your, what's in your collection? You can initiate requests as a patron, right? You can say, hey, I really think this is a thing we should have in our library. And if it's something your library doesn't already do, advocate for free online access. A lot of libraries, including the Altadena Library District, but lots of libraries across the country, now give folks the opportunity to get a free library card online so that you can access electronic resources and ebooks from anywhere that's available at a lot of places. Eliminate fines, you know, there are a lot of policy things that we can do that make libraries more welcoming, more inclusive and more accessible to people.
Awesome. Crystal, about you?
So when it comes to this question, you know, she's the expert here. But one of the ideas that came up today, it was someone who, you know, is involved in education. And he was talking about doing grassroots efforts and providing, you know, maybe even PDFs, having an online source. We all know the little libraries, you know, maybe if it's bad, we can provide it. Because I've had problems with my board, I've asked them to have a Spanish translator since it's 85% Latino. And they're like, no, we're not required by law to provide that, right? So I'm thinking, you know what? Well, let's show them that we're better. Let's do it for free. Let's provide a translator and just kind of like shame them because we're not providing something simple and basic. Such as, you know, providing books for people who, who has more authority to say you cannot read that. And another thing that I will suggest, which is kind of like, I'm finding my leadership style and it's been hard, right? But what I will suggest is calling out your public officials, call them out. Tell them to be responsible, to advocate for their community, call them out on social media. And I think, you know, that will put more pressure on them to stand up for something that is basic and right.
And people respond to, to social pressures. I'll be, I'll be very honest about that. And I will say, I am very excited. Our, our library is doing a diversity audit, so I'm very excited about that.
Oh, that's awesome. That's so cool. Yeah.
You know, I like, or it's being easy, it's easy being on a board, it's just these where it's like, we have an amazing director and like, and, and deputy director, they are both amazing, wonderful peeps. So I'm very thankful for the gems, as we call them. My final question that I have from, from us is, given the heated nature of board races, what advice would you give to candidates who are running for board positions this year and in the future?
Yeah, well, the biggest advice that I was given, and I think this is true for many things, is kind of going about the traditional way, talking to people one-on-one. Last year when I run, I would teach until 3:00 PM and then from 3:00 PM until it got dark, I would, I was door knocking. I was talking to as many people as I could. And it's one of those, you know, traditional things that works. I think that's why many people are pushing for schools to go back in person, right? Because when it comes to online, it doesn't work for the majority of people. So that will be my advice. Just go out there and talk to many people, see what are their concerns? What are their ideas? Just really connect with the people and, you know, that's going to go a long way. It's incremental, but it works. When you go out there, when you go door knocking, do it as a team. That will be my advice. Go there with a lot of heart and they'll see that and they'll, you know, support you. Especially when you're someone new with ideas, a lot of energy and hunger, they see that and they get excited.
Very true. Katie?
No, that's, that's such great advice. That's so true. You know, I think we touched on this a little bit earlier, but a lot of times the ways these local boards are set up, it's difficult for young people, for working people, for parents, right? Because meetings are weird times or in the middle of the day. And, you know, it's like, there's all this information that somehow everybody knows, but nobody really knows. And it's like a mystery how you figure it out. So I would say if, if you're thinking about running for a board seat, just do the deepest dive you can, find the policies, find a copy of the budget, be relentless. Do not be afraid to knock on the door of the district director or the superintendent or whatever and say, hey, how do, tell me where this comes from, tell me how this works, like walk me through it. And it can be really intimidating, you know, because you'll sit in those meetings, even in the audience and you're like, I have no idea. no idea what's happening, it's totally unclear, it's totally inaccessible. Um, but once you figure out how it all works, you can really articulate specific and targeted policy changes that can make a huge difference. So, you know, don't be afraid to ask questions, don't be afraid to annoy people who are there to help you understand how it works, and just keep drilling down, keep asking questions. All of it's public record, you can figure it out. Um, and if you're stuck, you know, reach out to the Run For Something Network, because somebody out there in Run For Something land can walk you through a set of financials and help you figure it out.
Very true. Um, that's what we're here for, is to help support our folks, not just to get elected, but also once they're elected. So thank you for, for that shout out, for, for our alumni network. Um, does anybody before, you know, before we move on, do we have, oh, we actually, we have um one quick uh question. Um, so the name of the website against banning books was, um, actually, I actually pulled it up.
It's Unite Against Book Bans, I just threw it in the chat, so uniteagainstbookbans.org. Um, so you should see that in the chat, and just, uh, just check it out, sign up. The ALA will keep you posted on what's happening with book bans across the country. And you can also follow that hashtag on Twitter, right, hashtag Unite Against Book Bans. You can follow the ALA on Twitter, um, and it'll keep you, it'll keep you in the loop about what's, what's the latest, and how you can, how you can make a difference against book bans.
I'm going to sign up now. Um, any other questions before we move on to our next panel? Well, I want to say thank you to both of you. Um, I know, you know, as somebody who sits, like I said, somebody who sits on boards of leverage, we used our parking lot as a COVID testing site. Uh, they are, you know, we have our, you know, I've seen Violet Folklore to go in New Hampshire, or, sorry. Um, we have, we, yeah, no, we have Violet Folklore in New Hampshire, um, you know, being performed at our library. So, you know, it's an excellent resource, um, and it's one that's truly one of the few good uh public goods that's still available to us that, you know, we have to continue to take advantage of. Um, so thank you so much to Dr. Katie Clark, and thank you, Crystal, for, for, for your insight on, on the Pasadena School Board, and, you know, continue the hustle, and good luck in, uh, good luck to both of y'all out there, so. Um, but thank you so much for joining us, thanks.
Thanks, Manny.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go ahead and transition to our next panel. Um, our next panel is um other, more school board members. So we are going to be joined by Caprice Edmund, who is the, uh, excuse me, what's that? Uh, she's the Pinellas County School Board, District Seven, that's out in Florida. Uh, she's currently elected, so she's running for reelection. Um, so Caprice is a lifelong resident of St. Petersburg and a proud graduate of Pinellas County Public Schools. She has earned a bachelor's degree in psychology, master's in elementary education with E, with an ESL endorsement, uh, master's in educational leadership, and a certificate in infant mental health. She's informed by her experience in every facet of Pinellas County Schools as a parent, as a student, as an educator, involved community member, and now a school board member. Uh, Caprice brings a unique perspective to Pinellas County School Board, and she's running for reelection to continue advocating for policies and practices that benefit all children, improve stakeholder engagement, and ensure the district remains in fiscally sound condition. So welcome, Caprice.
Thank you, it's great to be here.
Um, and um, so our next panelist will be Millicent Rogers. She represents the Durham School Board Consolidated District B in North Carolina. So, uh, Millicent is a proud graduate of Durham Public Schools and looks forward to leading the next generation of Durham Public School students by running for the Durham Board of Education. So from educating, um, uh, excuse me, from advocating for safe and appropriate playground equipment as PTA president, to advocating for greater education funding at the county level in her role as co-president of the Durham People Alliance, Millicent has never shied away from a fight for equity, no matter how challenging. Uh, Millicent has the skills, determination, experience to affect real change in Durham Public Schools, and has detailed plans to fight for equity for every family, school employees, families with limited English proficiencies, uh, families of childrens with disability, and most especially non-traditional families just like her. So welcome, Millicent.
Thanks so much for having me, I appreciate this.
And our, thank you, and our final uh panelist will be Alex, is it pronounced Rugiers?
Rugiers, yeah.
Years, so he is a newly elected member of the Norman Public School Board of Education, Office Number Two, out in Oklahoma. Uh, and Alex is a former Norman Public Schools teacher, who is a current, is currently a curriculum developer for the University of Oklahoma Center for Public Management, uh, a lifelong Norman resident. Uh, Alex has received his bachelor's degree in language arts education from the University of Oklahoma, and later received his master's degree in instructional leadership and academic uh curriculum while attending, uh, while teaching at Norman Public Schools. He taught sixth, seventh, ninth, and tenth graded uh English and language arts in the district for three years at both Norman High School and Longfellow Middle School. And in July of twenty twenty, Alex spoke before the Norman Public Schools, uh, Public Schools Board of Education, urging the district to understand that the decision to return to in-person instruction amid the pandemic was a life or death issue for teachers. So thank you, Alex, for joining us, um, wonderful to have you.
Thank you.
Awesome, so now that we have all y'all here, let's go ahead and start with uh some of these questions. So first, uh, note that you are running to serve in the district that you went to school in, and your son now goes to school in. How does that personal connection uh help or hurt your campaign?
So Durham right now is going through this transition that's based in identity politics. So it is helpful to have lived in Durham, been born and raised here, um, and it has been impactful um to be running for um the, a seat on the board where I went to school. One of the things that we're dealing with right now is the transition of magnet schools, and making them what uh families need right now. Thirty years ago, when I was in fourth grade, we went through that same transition, and it worked then, but it's no longer working. Um, and it was even difficult, I remember it being difficult for my family to transition from a traditional neighborhood school to a year-round school. For people of color tracking out for three weeks the first time around was very difficult, they were not check-out camps. Um, they were not things of that nature that served families. So being in a position as a member of the Board of Education while we're making those changes is really significant right now.
Awesome, that's real, that's real, so I appreciate you being on there. Um, Caprice, you are running for reelection this year, how has this campaign differed from your first one?
Well, my first campaign was my first time running for office. So now it's my second time running for office, however, the climate is a lot different. So I was elected during the twenty twenty election cycle in the middle of the pandemic, running a campaign. And District Seven, the seat has been held by African-American person for over two decades. And my um, my main opponent was Caucasian. So the potential for the board to be all white was an issue in our community, and we were campaigning dur- during a pandemic. Um, so fast forwarding to now, the politics and the culture wars are what I feel will be um, the highlights of the campaign, how me and my po- my opponent differ. However, I plan on keeping my campaign focused on the issues at hand, which is who's the most qualified candidate to advocate for all students and staff on, on our school board.
Awesome, I was going to say, always stay positive. Um, Alex, you're, congratulations on your win. You not only made history as the first openly LGBTQIA+ board member ever elected, you also beat a twenty-five-year incumbent to do so. So what kept you motivated during your campaign?
Yeah, there were definitely moments where I was wondering if I had enough gas to keep going, especially, um, there was a primary, and we came like a hundred votes short of just like winning it out right there, and found out we had to campaign for another two months, and I was like, I don't know if I have this in me, you know. It's been a, a long road already, but, you know, I was a, being a teacher in, in this district, and getting to know these students and these teachers that I was fighting for, really, in those moments that I was wondering whether I had the energy to keep going, I just thought of who, you know, my why, and who I was fighting for, um, and how they were counting on me to win. I couldn't, I can't give up if there's that many people that are counting on me to win. Um, and then also, I had just such a fantastic campaign team, and that really cannot be um overlooked. I think a lot of people think maybe at these local races that, um, they can do it on their own, and some people do, and some people win that way, but having my amazing campaign manager, campaign team there, always keeping me on track, always encouraging me and, and, um, you know, telling me what to do next, and, and um, being there to listen um to me when I was having doubts, and, and reassuring me was just really invaluable. Um, so, yeah.
Always got to give the shout out to the volunteers and staff who keep us, who hold us accountable and keep us going. Uh, um, so my next question is for all y'all. In the previous panel, we talked about the extra attention that board elections are getting. Was your campaign affected by this attention? And would you say it helps or hurts to have such a spotlight on boards? And I'll go ahead and start with, um, Millicent.
In my particular race, I think it um helps. So I am running against an incumbent that was appointed to the seat in twenty twenty, who was also from Durham and went through Durham Public Schools. But lots of people haven't realized that he has actually been on the board. And they have been questioning, well, what has he been doing? Why can't we hear his voice in advocating? If there hadn't been this extra attention, we have, um, the Rainbow Collective is pushing for LGBTQ plus um accommodations and policy in the school. We have uh Republicans running and making, trying to push out critical race theory and um book banning. So there's a whole lot of attention happening here, and he's not really saying anything about anything. And so that's helpful for me, because I'm able to advocate from a place of a non-board member and say what I would fight for and what's important to me, what I've been working towards all this time. Um, yeah, I think that that i- is helpful to have some attention. That's not always the case, right? And he's run for election previously and lost for this, uh, for the same school board. And so it's bringing sort of some attention to that, too.
There you go. Um, how about you, Alex?
Yeah, I think it definitely, definitely helped, um, with a lot of these conversations happening about book banning, critical race theory, COVID, um, all of that. Um, I think it was really just the perfect time to run for office against someone who was really entrenched, because people in my community at least were really upset about the way we handled COVID. People were really upset um about the potential um of book banning and, and things like that. And so it was very easy to turn the, those fears into, well, how can we really expect someone who's been on the board for twenty-five years and done the same thing, um, you know, the whole time, to really suddenly just champion these progressive issues in a way that he never has before? Or do you want to put your trust in a young progressive teacher and put him on the board? And so, um, I think the additional focus, it did, it did cause some, some, uh, you know, hatefulness too from, from the right, but way more it motivated um my progressive base. So I think it, it definitely, definitely helped.
Awesome, Caprice, about you?
I have uh mixed feelings about it. You know, it, it did bring out a lot of people that we haven't heard from, you know, the pandemic and people's belief about whether you have a mask mandate or not, and people started paying more attention. However, I feel that being the advocate for values that people uh that are based in science and that people care about allow this, this whole light that has been shined on school boards allowed everyone from both sides to see. So there are people who are on the right that agree with some of the things that I've advocated for, and there are more progressives that are like, yeah, she's our person. And they may have never paid attention to a school board race until the pandemic hit. Now that we have book bans and calls for getting rid of CRT, you know, people are paying attention, hence the spotlight on school board. And I think that it's a great thing. I think that the more input, the more people see that school board elections matter, the more we'll get some quality candidates, the more we'll have people that are willing to knock doors, phone bank, and really rally about the importance of public education. So I guess overall, it's a good thing, there's some growing pains with it.
People learning about these school board positions, I, it's like a, a double-edged sword, it kills me sometimes, but I'm, I'm thankful that we do have, we're starting to get some really good candidates, who I'm hoping some of people like yourselves will run for higher office in the future, too. So I know that y'all are like, I don't know about that, but, uh, trust, and I, trust me, I get, I get that, so. Um, my next question is, what is your biggest motivator in fighting for progressive education policies in your community? Um, and I'll go ahead and start with Alex.
Yeah, you know, progressive policies are really personal for me, as someone who was a student in this district, and who was a teacher by trade, and, and in this district. Um, you know, a lot of these um attacks from the right are on LGBTQ students and families. And as a queer person, it really, you know, puts a fire under me to do something about it. Um, but also because a lot of progressive communities get complacent about how um safe they are, because they've always, they've had a long history of progressive leadership. And uh my town has long been considered one of the most progressive towns in Oklahoma, but the same day that I was elected, we had our first Republican mayor in my, in my memory, in my lifetime, um, that was elected um to our, to our city government. So, um, there is really a, 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 a serious um push that we got to make to push back against um these attacks on, on progressive values if we're going to retain them, and we can't just get complacent and feel like, um, we can rest on what we've been doing. So that's, that's my motivation.
It's a good one. Um, Millicent, how about you?
Very much like Alex, I live in a town, Durham, that's considered very progressive. Um, and things have been sort of status quo lately. But one of the things that motivates me as a working-class, single parent, that if I am not the change agent for progress, if it's not me, then who will it be? Um, my son deserves to be able to go to affirming spaces where he can wear his hair however he chooses, and he can live his life however he wants, um, and he can present himself in a way and be accepted. And our educators deserve that, those same affirming spaces. And we have to continue to push for those things and make sure that uh the wealthy don't stay wealthy off the backs of black and brown people. And so, um, that's my motivation, to make sure that we have safest affirming spaces for all people, especially in the education system.
How about you, Caprice?
My motivation is knowing that we can do better, and that every child deserves a high-quality education. From being a parent of four children, being a former educator within the district, serving as a guardian at Lydum, and being active in the community. I hear the concerns of parents, teachers, even students. And as Millicent mentioned, I, I believe I'm the one.
Well, Caprice, I think your, your sound went off. Uh, Caprice, can you hear us? You want to unmute yourself real quick?
Yes.
There you go, we got you, we got you, yeah.
So I was saying, my biggest motivator is knowing that I'm going to advocate for our kids, for our educators, and just really work hard on behalf of our community, because every child deserves a great education.
That's awesome, those are all like super legit reasons, um, and you have me fired up, I was like, I'm about to go knock on doors for y'all. That's awesome. Those are all like super legit reasons. And you have me fired up. I was like, I'm about to go knock on doors for y'all. So speaking of knocking on doors, what ways have you found that work to diffuse tough conversations when you're knocking on doors and slash or talking to people in your community? So, Melissa, you want to go first? You're like, oh, man, you shouldn't have called me. I'm sorry.
Um, really, I'm just making sure, well, I'll be masked up, but you can sort of tell when somebody's smiling. And so be a smiling face and approachable has been a major help. And grow, uh, go, like the panel said before, going with a team and being really excited about the work that we're doing, the change we want to bring to our area for whatever office we're running for, what we're, who we're trying to get elected, being excited about that, that momentum shifts to the person that's listening. And also making sure that we listen to, to what they want to tell us about the educational system. Because they want to know that they have an input, especially when they're choosing to vote for you.
How about you, Caprice?
So this question reminded me of a meet and greet that, that someone had at their apartment complex. And someone came and they were trying to agitate and they were like, well, how do you feel about House Bill 1557? And I stated the fact that, well, if it's signed into law as a school board, we have to follow the law. And then he was like, well, how do you really feel? And I said, well, as a school board, there are four out of seven board members that would have to agree with breaking the law. And I can guarantee you that most school boards would probably follow the law. And then he was like, oh, okay.
Oh, no. We lost you again. All right. No, there we go. Try it one more time.
So I was, I was just sharing an experience that I had when someone who tried to get me to say something that he wouldn't agree with. So just framing it and framing it in facts and the law.
That's so good. It's so good. Oh, and I, oh, and a meet and greet too. Oh, the worst. I'm sorry. Alex, how about you?
Yeah, I really agree with both Caprice and Melissa, but you know, especially what Melissa said about how, you know, everyone who is going to approach you from a hostile place is most likely, I think, in my experience, coming from a place of fear. They're afraid of something and they want you to tell them that their fears, you know, are valid and that, that, you know, that they're going to be addressed in some way. And it might not be in the way that they want, but you can always listen to people's fears and, and, and listen to, to how they feel like things should be and try to get to the bottom of why they feel that way. And more often than not, even if you can't come to a conclusion that they agree with, just you sitting there and listening to them and them feeling like someone who's going to represent them possibly is, is listening to their concerns is enough to diffuse that situation. I think a lot of people that have come at me in a hostile way, um, were expecting me to fight them and have an argument with them on their front porch about these issues. And, you know, I said, I, I really empathize with, you know, I, I really empathize, empathize with them and, and tried to figure out where they were coming from. And that seemed to, um, really throw them off a lot of times and really get the, the hostility out of the way. So, um, that's my biggest advice for that.
I'm just going to say I cosign all of these policies because they are, they're all really, really successful and strong ones. Yeah, I, I just also say y'all, that is, those are all the right things to do. So my next and final question for y'all is what can everyone here, uh, tonight do to help campaigns like yours? So I'll go ahead and start with, um, with Caprice.
Well, you can.
Is she frozen?
She just froze. Right when we were about to find out the good stuff too. All right, go ahead again, Caprice.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
I, I was saying you can go to my website, adminforeducation.com and sign up to volunteer or make a contribution.
Perfect. Melissa, go ahead.
Yep. Fundraising has been the most difficult part of the run. So if there's a candidate that you feel passionate about, give, 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 tell your friends about them and give some more. Have your friends give, host a fundraiser, even if it's virtual. Give, 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 especially for, um, progressive candidates. It's so hard to fundraise because we don't have deep pockets like so many of the right wings do.
It's real. Alex, go ahead.
Yeah, it might just sound a little bit callous, but money is just like the best way you can help. Because, uh, I mean, time, if you are near the campaign and you can give volunteer time, that is also really, really great. But, um, you know, my campaign at least, um, spent quite a bit of money on paid canvassing and stuff like that. So, um, because a lot of people were afraid to go door knocking in the, in the COVID pandemic. And so, um, we really had to make up with that with extra fundraising. And so, you know, money and time. I mean, those are the most basic ways that you can really impact your local communities by giving money and time to a candidate that you believe in. So.
I would like to also add that it's, you know, your investment goes a long way for school board candidates. Y'all's budgets are usually not that big. So, you know, any contribution goes a long way. And to put it into perspective, like, um, conservative and, and, and the right, the far right especially are, you know, they are pouring so much money, uh, for candidates who are anti, you know, who are these book banning, you know, anti-CRT folks. So every little bit like, as it helps, helps candidates like Caprice, Alex and Melissa. Thank you all three of y'all so much for, 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 uh, for joining us tonight. Y'all are so amazing and I'm, I'm like very thankful that we've endorsed y'all and that y'all are part of the Run For Something family. So thank you so much. Good luck on all of your races. And I'm going to go ahead and kick it off to Amanda to go ahead and close us out.
Manny, thank you for that incredible moderating and for asking such thoughtful questions. Thank you to Dr. Katie Clark, to Crystal Davila, to Alex, to Caprice, to Melissa and to our development team, Marcia and Kate, for putting together tonight's event. Especially I want to thank our host committee who is very generously matching all gifts tonight up to $5,000. And we've already raised just a hair under 1,500 tonight for this work. But we are hoping you can ship in just a little bit more to help us meet this incredible match. So whatever you're able to give, Kate or Marcia will drop the link in the chat. We'll also follow up via email. You can give to Run For Something's work. You can give to these candidates and alumni. You can help us build an incredible pipeline of talent, of young people who are going to run for school board. We're going to serve their communities. We're going to fight for teachers and for kids. We're going to push back on some of the most outrageous bullshit we are seeing from the right. And we're going to defend our libraries and our schools as the real hearts of democracy. So thank you for being a part of this. Thank you for being part of the Run For Something community. And thank you again to all of our speakers and have an amazing evening. Bye.